I agreed to do it today, which I did.
All right, so let's go ahead and get started. It is 1:02 on October 30th, 2019. This is a workshop that called this meeting to order. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second, Mr. Chair. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Voice, Chair, voice.
Yes.
Chair, pass.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Is that a new one, voice to your voice?
Oh, jeez.
That's right, she calls me.
Love you, JJ.
She calls me poosh. Anyway, we're called this meeting to just discuss the security issues and upcoming plans for the courthouse. We've had several meetings with Mr. Langford, I see he's here in the office, Judge Margolis, the sheriff's office, and our maintenance director, Mr. Hanson.
District Attorney.
And the, I was getting to it.
Well, it looked like you were.
I'm sorry. And our district attorney.
I love helping you.
And our district attorney, what's his name again? Mr. Dial? Anyway, we've had some meetings about the courthouse and the security issues. And I just want to start this meeting with one sentence. And then what I'd like to do is maybe get some comments from, from any, anyone here that would like to make comments. But I want to start the meeting with one sentence. This is Curry County. And violence and something bad will never, ever happen here until it does. And that's what we have to realize. There's a lot of places in this nation that have said it will never come to our doors, in our county, in our cities, in our schools, that it has. I will say that I would think that our sheriff will tell you that violence and the, the bar has definitely been lowered in the last few, well, put it this way, continues to get lower as the violence continues to increase in this nation. And it is behoof of us to protect not only ourselves, but the citizens in this county and our youth. So with that being said, if, I'd like to open the floor up to basically anyone that would like to make a comment about what, how they feel about the courthouse security. And we do have some things that we have talked about that, I don't know if you want to talk about that first, but this is an open workshop. And because it's elected officials and, and different department heads, you know, I don't think we have to have a lot of formality here. We do need to go up to the microphone if you're going to speak. But I would like to, to say that, you know, because we are professionals and we understand that, you know, there are rules that we have to follow here. You know, let's have an open discussion about what we expect and what we would hope for.
I'll go first.
I knew you would.
So the courthouse, there's definitely security problems there. The one that, from my perspective is the worst is the downstairs courtroom. In that courtroom, the people, the criminals walk directly behind my chair. They occasionally bump my chair because it's such a small courtroom. There's no way else for them to get to where their attorney is. That courtroom is a real security hazard based on its, just its size. Everybody is within arm's reach. The upstairs, and both courtrooms are security problems because neither courtroom has a bailiff in them. And so all those court hearings, most, for the most part, are held without any security. The sheriff is very good about providing security when we have an idea that there's going to be a threat and we let him know. On occasions where it's a little more heightened, they'll even set up a metal detector in the hallway upstairs and have someone there, but for the most part, we don't know. When, I mean, we can, we never know in any case exactly when somebody might go, go off. And so that's a problem. One thing we do that helps is arraignments for people who are in custody. Their first appearance is done over video camera from the jail. And so that's helpful for security reasons. And sometimes those people, because this is their first appearance in court, do act up. We had 60 days given to a fellow for contempt of court who was acting up the other day over the video camera. So anyways, those, those are problems. I, I'm on the security committee and I think I'm the lone voice of dissent with the plan. The plan, of course, was to lock some of the doors and not others and not have security. And I don't see that that solves the problem. In some ways, I think it makes it worse. If everyone is directed to go to the front door instead of the side doors, you're going to have defendants and their victims coming in the same door. You'll have opposite parties in divorce using the same door and leaving the same door. And then the person, if they are there to cause trouble, knows which exit everyone's going to be going out of. So I think that locking the side doors or all the doors and having somebody there for security makes a lot of sense. My position is that plan should not be started until we have, have that lined up. We have somebody to do security there. Having a completely unguarded, making somebody go in in a completely unguarded door that's the front door, to me, doesn't make any difference than having them go in an unguarded door that's the side doors. I think, I think in fact, it probably makes the problem worse. And so that's, that's just my opinion on the matter. I think the committee wanted to go ahead and lock the north and south doors to the courthouse. And I think it's not clear yet if that plan is adopted. And I think, I guess it was, there wasn't a vote. But if that is adopted, it's not really clear to me that the plan is for employees to be able to use those doors. My understanding was that was not part of the plan because there was a concern that employees might let somebody in. They wasn't supposed to come in those doors, although, again, going to a front door that has no guard really doesn't seem, or no security doesn't seem any different than going in a side door with no security. It will, locking those doors will create an inconvenience for people that work there and for the general public that generally, most people do use the side doors, the north and south door, not the front door. So it seems premature to enact that plan until we have a security system set up for the doors that will be open. I think that's a good idea if we, if we have security. I think it's a good idea then to make everyone go through a secure door, but until we're at that point, I don't, I don't see the advantage of it. It seems like it's just a disadvantage. And I know that Jim Collins sent a letter to you commissioners that had his opinion about it and I think that echoed mine as well. He told me he couldn't make it today and asked me to relate that. So that's all I have. It's, it is a problem and there's no easy solution. The main problem, of course, is the design of the building because it, because it creates, I think as Mr. Collins pointed out in his letter, no matter of the north and the south and the west door, all of those have stairs that are not handicap friendly. The only handicap friendly door is the one at the basement and that's a narrow hallway. And it's, if somebody's in a wheelchair, they have to go down the parking lot through the same area that the patrol cars will be going to drop off prisoners at the Sallyport. And I don't know, I guess, I guess we do that now. But, and, and so maybe, maybe the back door could be made a, a security door. Then you wouldn't need a security officer in the front and the back. But it is a difficult problem and it's a difficult courthouse. It would be nice to have bailiffs in the courtroom. I don't know if that's something the county would consider, but I, that's my suggestion anyways. And I don't, I, I'm the dissenting voice on the committee. I'm sure they'll have a different opinion for you. Thank you.
Commissioner Voice.
I'm a little uncomfortable here and I'll tell you why. Maybe you could cancel huddle or Director Smelsky can help me out. We're basically on camera telling the whole world where we are with this kind of exposure. Am I correct on that?
Well, we're talking about security measures that could be, we could be instituting for the courthouse and jail and we have to do it in a public hearing.
No, we could have done it, correct me, that's why I'm asking for help. We could have done it in an executive session and invited the people that are in this room and keep that. I just, I've just really, all of us, no, I've, I've expressed my concern about this in the past that it goes back to when we didn't have security cameras here. I said, I brought it into executive session because I didn't want to tell the whole world. We're exposed. And here we are again. I had a misunderstanding, Commissioner Pass, on what this meeting was going to be today. You mentioned workshop. I thought we had a new plan that we were going to look and get some input. Maybe I'm overthinking, that's possible. I appreciate very much the work you've done on this. But it goes even beyond this. It has the potential to even go beyond Curry County, who knows where. And so I don't like hearing that we don't have bailiffs. I don't want the world to know that. And so that's all I need to say on that now. But yeah, my preference would have been to have an executive session and invite the people here.
Commissioner Gold.
I was going to say, we haven't adopted a plan yet. We're just in the talking stages and if a plan is adopted, those doors would be closed off if that happens to be the plan we, we choose. And folks don't even know whether we will or will not have bailiffs at this point. So it's just in the discussion stage.
And that, that's basically what Mr. Langford is here for. He wants to hear what this board is, is planning to do with the courthouse and security issues with the courthouse. He's not here to give us direction either way. He, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is here to hear what we would like to, the direction that we would like to go with this. Sheriff.
Sheriff Ward, Curry County, Sheriff's Office. My opinion is this, when this courthouse was built, it was never really built for security in the future. And it is in need of definitely a change in security because things are getting different, different, more volatile. In fact, in one day of sitting in the audience, I, I took three people out that were on there with Bowie knives on their side underneath their shirt because I saw the bulge, you know, and I'd asked them what it was. There is a security problem. Being that you're saying, I have to disagree with Everett a little bit when he says, you know, you got victims and suspects all going out same door. Well, I was under the impression that the doors would be locked from the outside but still have access to go out from the inside. And I, and I kind of agree with that. The bottom door, we've always had to face with the same issue when it comes to handicap accessibility. You know, we talked about putting a buzzer on the door for, or a key fob for the employees to go through that route. And I don't have a problem with that because it's going to be monitored by a camera system anyway. Somebody doesn't have a key fob or whatever, they can buzz, dispatch is going to ask them, what's your purpose? You know, I need to go to court. And so on handicap accessibility, everybody else would be going up through the front door. Yeah, we don't have 24, or I shouldn't say 24/7, but we don't have 40 hours of coverage constantly when the court's in session. But bringing it into the front of that building, everybody goes in, everybody should come in that way. So it'll be monitored. There'll be a metal detector there, whether it's manned all the time, probably not. But in any time of situation where the court says, hey, we need court security, the DA needs security, whoever asks for it, we can put somebody manning that for that purpose. But it's not going to be a 40 hour a week, five days a week, things like that. But it, it will provide a better security than what we have as it is. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Langford.
Thomas Langford, trial court administrator for Coos and Curry Counties. First, I want to thank the commissioners for meeting. I came on board here two and a half years ago and when I interviewed in December, the first thing I noticed coming from a court system in the state of Ohio was the sheer lack of security, not only in this facility, but also in the Coos County facilities. And the fact that we're able to stand here today, two and a half years later, I think is a testament to all the stakeholders that are participating in this conversation. So first, thanks to you three and thank you to the parties that have helped facilitate that conversation. Because I think, you know, when you look across the state of Oregon, the court systems, Curry County is not unique in the fact that there is a lack of security. And, you know, to Commissioner Voice's point about, you know, broadcasting this to all the parties in Curry County or whomever wants to listen to, you walk into that building and you know there's no security. It's, it's there, it's glaring, it's in your face. And as the committee met and discussed security potentials and where we want to go, I think one thing to consider is the fact that we're not just talking about the individuals who work in that office and that building. We're also talking about the community that enters that building for a multi-use structure. So the practice has been in the past is that Curry County and Coos County talk about security. They talk about it, but there's been a lack of action and things that have occurred. The discussion to secure the north and the south door where, as the sheriff mentioned, a proposal and a step of making it a more secure facility. Single point entry is the basic standard for most courthouses and structures in the nation. Unfortunately, there's a lot of layers to the facility that we have in Curry County and the facilities that we have in Coos County. And those layers become, you have to peel them back. The first layer is how do you create a more secure facility? And that's the first layer that we're at today. Whether or not a courtroom is more secure or less secure is another layer. Whether or not we add a buzzer to the back of the door for the handicap access is another layer of that onion that we would have to peel back. But that first layer is taking a step in a direction to make a more secure facility. I don't disagree with the fact that it does create an inherent dilemma or interference to the public to have to enter through a west or east entrance of that building. We had these same conversations in Coos County before we secured that building's multiple points of entry. And we didn't have any, any client complaints or customer complaints or community complaints from once that facility was secured to a, to a front and rear entry point access to that facility. Ultimately, a more secure facility or a more reasonably secure facility would include things such as a bailiff. You know, monitoring of that front entry during all business hours. And then securing those entries to a point that we know they're secure and the sheriff's department can properly respond in case of an emergency. Right now, four entrances is not a secure facility. It doesn't put us in a position that it's, it's more secure. People can come and go whatever entrance they want. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Dial with the fact that the intermixing of individuals, the intermixing of individuals happens now in the hallways of all of our facilities. It happens in the front of the facility as you enter to and from. There's mechanisms that can be put in place for witnesses to have them enter and arrange for those witnesses to enter at a different time or either, either through the rear entry or to make special accommodations for special hearings. That's something that I know has been done in other locations and I know it's been done in the courts that I came from in Ohio. I think this is a step that I hope the commissioners consider in the long run to be a step in the right direction and not just a conversation that happens and we repeat the same conversation in 12 months or two years with no action. Do you have questions?
Well, I think I'd like to reiterate to, to everyone exactly what, you know, we kind of talked about over here. And if, if you'd like to do that, exactly what we talked about was to, you know, to put the metal detector up front, to, to close the two side entry doors. They will have egress but not ingress into those two doors from the outside. And then we did speak with, you know, the sheriff and I have spoken and he spoke somewhat at the meeting about having a bailiff to, to man the metal detector out front and it wouldn't be full-time. But perhaps we can find a way to work that out, that it's, it's five days a week, that we've got a bailiff over there, get that into our budget somehow, that we've got a full-time bailiff over there to protect the employees in that courthouse so that we do only need one point. And then we also spoke briefly about the possibility of fencing off the back parking lot. And there is a way to do that and I don't want to go through the blueprint of it now. Mr. Hanson and I have spoken about it and I've actually talked to a couple of contractors about it. And it seems it could be done pretty easily with basically a chain link fence and some, a light layer of razor wire on top and two gates. And there would be a camera entry that somebody could beep, you know, buzz someone into there. It would be good because your judges would be protected. Your, the county council would be protected. Certain employees in that building could be protected and the youth, which is one of the biggest parts is, you know, we're bringing youth in for, for court appearances. You don't want that out, you know, into the mainstream as much as you can. So you can bring, you know, selected youth in through that, that door as well. And that would be the back door. And if there's a handicap person that wants to come through that door, they would buzz in at the gate and, and like sheriff said, that person would be buzzed through to get into that door. So that would be an expense, but we've also found that, I think, you mentioned that that part of that expense could be picked up through some, some people that you know.
Correct.
And, and then the county could, could pick up part of it. And then we could probably look at some grant money for the rest of it. So I think this is easily done. It's, it's, I think something necessary. And of course, we are, I know Commissioner Voice has looked and talked about with AOC and I'm going to continue to, to push that as well as a new courthouse. I mean, we need a new courthouse. So we're going to continue to push that. I know next year we've got a, a round coming up that I believe we're going to qualify first or second in the state for a new courthouse. So, and there's some grant funding for that. So those are things for the future, but I think right now we need to protect the public and we need to protect everyone that goes in and out of that building. Commissioner Gold.
I'm, I would like to add one thing to that. I think for the employees, there should be a key fob for them to be able to go in the two side doors.
The problem with the side doors, and this is something that we discussed, is let's say I'm sitting outside one of the side doors and I'm laying in wait, for lack of a better term. And when I see one of them, those employees walk in through that door, I can either grab that door before it closes and go in behind that employee and/or force that employee to let me in if they have a fob. Where if you go, everyone has to go through the front door, then you don't have that problem.
So that, that was something that we also debated in Coos County. So it's not a singular debate in terms of allowing employee exit and entrance. I don't disagree with what the commissioner said in terms of how employees enter. If we had a new facility, you would build a facility with the three Ps in mind. So you would have an entrance for the personnel, an entrance for the public, and then an access point for prisoners. And those prisoners would be kept out of the public and the personnel side of things, which creates a nice streamlined process. We don't have that facility in any of our locations here on the south coast. You know, strategically, this other point I would make is that, you know, I mentioned this is not a unique issue in Curry County. This is something that the chief justice in the state of Oregon is including in her strategic campaign for the next two years is thorough analysis of some uniformity and courthouse security because it is an issue. It is an issue that's going to take local and state collaboration to help address and fix and redefine. So, you know, I, the system's not broke in terms of the partnerships. The sheriff's department is a wonderful partner and does a wonderful job here and our sheriff in Coos County. The system is broke in terms of the amount of funds it takes to properly staff courthouse security, to have staff there, and our facilities are not set up in a, in a functional way to provide the security that is essential, not only to the personnel, but to the public who access those facilities. So, you know, the ultimate decision of whether or not to fob those doors and to allow access to the decision that I defer to the commissioners to make. It's your guys' facility and it's your building. I do echo the sentiments that if you allow access in and out through those doors, it does potentially create some additional barriers or some additional issues that can complicate the process.
Couldn't someone just, just as easily force themselves in the front door?
They could.
I mean, if we don't have manned doors at all times, then they could just as easily do that, I would think.
I think the, you know, and what we spoke about in, in our group was, you know, the possibility of allowing people to go out those doors and making sure they stand by the door until it closes, but not to come into those doors. And again, I think it would behoof of us to, to look into finding, you know, if, if we don't have the funding already, to find the funding for a full-time person at that door. We've already got the metal detectors. They're already there and the sheriff's already said, you know, there, there are times intermittent and we're not going to divulge what times those are. But there are times that we have the metal detectors and the deputy at the door. So, you know, perhaps we can find a way to do that full-time. Yes.
Let's just have staff research that, get together with sheriff, determine what that would cost in a year's time, scheduling and get a report back. I think that would be, and I'd rather, I prefer a deputy. And so I'd, I don't want to be confused between a deputy and a bailiff, but.
You got a lot of reserve deputies too. Could you use a reserve deputy for something like that, Sheriff?
I think it needs to be a paid position.
Okay. Maybe we could work some, a little bit of both into it somehow. Ms. Collins?
Do we have consensus on that though?
Oh, can we talk about it after we're all done? We can, we can come out. What we're, what our plan is, is when Mr. Langford leads here, he's got a, a direction that he knows that this board wants to go with securing that courthouse.
I might have a question or two for him later, Mr. Chair.
Renee Collins, Curry County Clerk. In hearing parts of the plans, first time I'm hearing it from, from you all, my first concern is making sure we do have wheelchair accessibility to the basement of the courthouse because voters use that, folks in our office, recording office, a lot of our citizens need that elevator. So it would, it would have a lot of use and then also after hours on election day for voting. And then I'm hearing about a chain fence around the parking lot around the courthouse. Remember our ballot box is there? That's one of our 24-hour drive-through. So it's a voting process that goes through that parking lot where I'd have major concerns if you're wanting to lock that down from that process. It's not easy to just move a ballot box and, and direct folks to vote someplace else.
We were actually looking to see if the city of Gold Beach would give us a part of that road to, to change the way that the ballot box, we'd have to move the ballot box.
We need, we need the ballot box at the courthouse.
I, no, I'm, I'm, listen to what I'm going to say though. We're going to move the ballot box about 30 feet.
Oh.
And get the city of Gold Beach to white line that, that sidewalk for us. So all we'd have to do is move the ballot box to the other side of that driveway and then the front of it there and they could pull right up in front of there and, and drop their ballots.
Roundabout sounds wonderful. So thank you, those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments?
I'm Amy Parker with the Curry County Juvenile Department. Wendy Lang, our director couldn't be here today. She had sent an email of her concerns and so I'm just here to kind of voice those. Everett covered part of it. And I appreciate you addressing the youth. When we bring our youth up from the detention facility in Del Norte, they are shackled. Bringing them in the front door of the courthouse in front of victims or other public is a concern of ours, privacy. We have changed department offices with Everett and the DA's office, which I don't know if Wendy's talked to Renee or you yet, but she was going to address the fact of moving the juvenile parking spot to the other side of the courthouse as well because that was interfering with elections. We have a designated juvenile spot to bring them in and out.
What I spoke to Ms. Lang about though is if we do fence that parking lot, is there would be a place right there by that elevator to, for her to park her, you know, juvenile park a vehicle, unload the, unload the, the youth there, walk them directly into the elevator upstairs.
Perfect, okay.
They wouldn't have to face anyone because the gate would be closed behind them.
Okay, perfect. That was one of the things she just talked about, being able to bring them in a side door other than coming in the front door. I know that Mr. Langford addressed the victims with offenders. We had a case recently where we had three victims and an offender. They're all coming in at the same time. It is a problem. If we could put something in the plan to designate a door where somebody from the DA's office or ours could bring the victims in so there isn't that. Some of them are scared. Again, in our, in our world, we're dealing with 11 to 15-year-olds, up to 18, and it is scary when you have an 11-year-old and an 18-year-old victim situation.
Could they be escorted up to juvenile, like have, have, have one of, someone in your office when they know they're going to arrive?
Yeah, and that's what Wendy was asking is if we could.
Ask them right up to an office where they can close the door and now they're secure.
Correct. And that's what we did with these youths, but meeting them where they can come in separate doors. Because you don't, if, if everybody is funneling in the same door, if you know that your court appearance is at 9:30 in the morning, the offender If you know that your court appearance is at nine 30 in the morning, the offender's family could be out there at eight 30 waiting. And that victim may not show up until nine o'clock and still have to walk past him. That was just one of our concerns. And then her other was, um, and you addressed this, was the front door. Um, she's all for the front door security and, but she would like to see that manned, um, at the metal detector.
Okay, thank you. Last chance to dance, anyone else?
Eric Hanson, Facilities Director. Um, I too have a problem with discussing security measures in an open forum. Um, I do have a plan that is practical that I could enact. Involving the north and south doors, only allowing law enforcement to use those doors for ingress. Uh, however, we cannot eliminate those two points for egress. We can easily with the, uh, mechanics that are in, in existence right now, change it so law enforcement only can access those. Perhaps we could work in a juvenile for a weekend entrance. I can program those locks as they stand, um, instantly. As far as the fence around the parking lot, it's highly impractical. Problem being that there's no mechanical gate that is unmanned. That cannot be bypassed to prevent either egress or ingress. Someone could easily sabotage a gate and make us frozen either in or out of that parking lot. It would be way too simple. Um, and there is the, uh. Problem with the mechanics themselves, you have chain drives, you have hydraulic lifts, weather-related, um, failures. I don't like depending on a mechanical device to allow us access to that. Only ADA accessibility and only ADA or, uh, law enforcement access to the building. But because of the Sallyport being located in there, they need to get in and out immediately at times. And, uh, I would hate to have a mechanical malfunction prevent them from access.
Don't most gates, as gates that I've dealt with all of my life, has a pin? You pull that pin and now you can physically open the gate.
Person there to pull that.
Right, I'm saying if, if the access, like the electric goes out and your battery backup has gone dead because the electric's been out for three days. You're not going to be having a courtroom anyway, so.
Unfortunately, that pin can be pulled by someone from the public at any time as well.
Yes, but what we're trying to do is limit. We're not saying we can do away with, what we're trying to do is limit. If someone finds out that a gate has been tampered with, they can contact someone and get it fixed. All I'm saying is when we've got a district attorney or we've got a judge or we've got a youth coming through those gates. That is, could be in harms way. Um, like, like I said at the beginning of this, it'll never happen in Curry County until it does. And once it does, we'll all wish that we had done more.
Yes, I think we need to be educating instead of scaring the public.
I'm not trying to scare anyone sir.
All right, um, I do want to remind you, have you ever seen a vehicle versus chain link fence, gate? This is a problem.
Mr. Hanson, I think we're getting a little off topic here because.
Okay, I just wanted to bring up my concerns.
All right, thank you. Wow. I'll bite my tongue. Mr. Langford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, come on up, just nothing. I think I just have one question. I find myself almost wanting to travel to some of the other courthouses. I've been to a couple, but I wasn't looking for, uh, areas that might give me concern for our courthouse here. But I know that you, you mentioned something there, well, two things actually, but the intermixing, I think is a phrase you used. Is that somewhat common in smaller rural, uh, county courthouses in Oregon? I think I heard you say it is.
You, intermixing multi-use facilities?
Yes.
Yes, so most of, most of.
And I'm talking about different citizens coming in at, at, at not the best of times.
I think that's common.
Okay, I assume, assume so.
It is.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I will speak to, real quickly to, uh, some of our neighboring counties that have security. Um, so Jackson County, uh.
Take your time so we can all learn this, this is good information.
So, so as, as an example, and please tell me to stop talking if I'm running out too long. I don't mind, my, my wife will tell you I talk too much sometimes. Um, Jackson County, for example, they have, they have security, single point of entry. Everyone comes through a single door. Lane County Courthouse in Eugene is single point of entry. All staff and, uh, staff and public come through a single point of entry. I think maybe the DA's office has a second, second point of entry in Lane County. Um, Jackson County, the flip back is a little unique because that is a facility that is just a courthouse. Lane County is multi-use, their commissioners share that same structure. Uh, Multnomah's new courthouse is also going to be a single structure. Um, but most other courthouses in Oregon right now either have single point of entry. Or they're fighting the same struggle, uh, internally with how you create a more secure structure. So we're not, again, unique in that fact, but we are, um, helping to lead a way to make courthouses more secure.
Commissioner Gold?
So how new are those courthouses that you're referring to?
So Lane County's courthouse, uh, is newer than the year that this courthouse was built, which I believe was 1953. Uh, Coos County's courthouse was built in 51. I can tell you, I've recently toured Lane County's courthouse. And while our courthouses are older, uh, their courthouse is not as well maintained and taken care of as our courthouse. So, um, it's very nice to walk in and know that our courthouses are at least a little bit better taken care of. Um, Jackson County's, I don't know the year of that, but we are. Let me get this, we are the seventh worst ranked courthouse in the state of Oregon based on the 2000.
Say that again.
Seventh worst ranked courthouse facility, structure, that's not safety per se. Safety is a factor into that in the state of Oregon. I think at the time of a 2010 or 12 study, I might've gotten the years wrong, we were ninth or 10th. Since then, several courthouses have been replaced. Jefferson's courthouse was replaced out in eastern, central eastern Oregon. Multnomah's getting a new courthouse. Klamath's courthouse was condemned because of an earthquake. So we're the seventh worst, which is not good, which is pretty darn close to the worst. So Coos, which is two years older, is the ninth worst. Um, so again, we're working in facilities and structures that, you know, are old. Um, facilities and structures that weren't built for the times that we live in today. And I'm not saying we live in times that are dangerous. Um, but we live in times that we need to think about things a little differently. And be a little bit more creative and, and how we ensure that everyone entering and exiting those facilities. We're providing the most safe and secure structure that they have. So that, that's the intention and the goal that I hope we continue to work towards. It's not a simple solution. It's not a, it's not a let's just do this and it's going to solve it. It's let's take a step and take another step and take another step. And these are things that are not going to resolve in 12 months, I can tell you that. Um, it's naive of, of me to think they're going to resolve in 12 months. These are, these are problems that are going to take us working collaboratively together to resolve these issues. A new facility is going to be, you know, a letter to the AOC, getting on the list, me participating in a phone call. You know, talking to our representatives and our legislators, getting the funding behind that and engaging the community. Um, it's going to take all those things and those things can't happen overnight. Um, and it takes a, a combined effort to take the steps necessary to accomplish those kind of goals and ambitions. That I think many of us have and want to see in Curry County.
Um, on, on that note, um, pretty much all the federal buildings, state houses are all one entry that I've been into?
Yep.
Correct.
You had something else, Commissioner?
No, that was what I was going to bring up. I'm glad you mentioned that. Other than Jackson County's also trying to get a new jail, new courthouse, all the above.
We're in, we're ahead of them though.
Jack, Jackson County is, is adding a new courtroom because they were, the legislators did give them a new judge. So they are adding a new courtroom, they're working on building that now within its current structure.
Commissioner Gold?
Okay, we're way down there.
Yes, we are.
So to fund this, give me a percentage, what would the state, what percent would they fund? And would we have to take the rest out in a bond or how is it usually done in other counties?
You're, you're speaking of a facility, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, courthouse facility.
I'm not talking about a couple of sidewalks and locks on doors.
No. So a new courthouse facility, if it was a multi-use structure. So if we left it as it stands today, where multiple departments are utilizing that structure, including the court. The state, currently how it's set up is that the state would cover 50% of the courthouse space. So that's not 50% of the building, which sometimes gets confused. It's 50% of the utilized courthouse space. So that would be offices for the court staff, the courtrooms, most likely the entry points, most likely the bathrooms, depending how the facility is laid out. Um, because if the facility is laid out in such a way that it incorporates the bathroom into the courthouse space, that would be part of that. The remaining portion of the 50% of the courthouse space would either have to be through a bond measure. Or through a straight, direct cash flow. So money that's been, uh, set aside, uh, as a rainy day, uh, that doesn't always exist. Uh, it does happen, I can tell you, I came from a county in Ohio that paid cash for a new courthouse.
Um, I don't think it's going to be this county.
It's not going to be this county and that's okay. Um, because other counties have worked to pass bond measures and, uh, to fund it. Lane County's bond measure just failed, uh, for their new courthouse. Um, but other bond measures have recently passed, uh, and been provided for. So, um, I think if we go down that road of building a, a new structure and a new facility. Uh, I think it's going to take the collaboration of all the stakeholders involved to really analyze and look at that space. And decide what space we actually need and what space we're actually going to grow into in the next 25 to 30 years. Um, a lot of times buildings are built with the perception that you're going to need all this extra space. And they're not built with the idea and the understanding of what space do you actually need? What space is actually equitable? And where is your technology going? Because technology, as, as all of us know, in the last 30 years has drastically changed how we do business. And it's only going to more drastically change the next 20 years, more likely the next five years, including how we deal with court matters. You know, whether or not court matters are heard more telephonically, more video. Uh, do we do online dispute resolution with parties? So all of that would be part of, I would think, the collaboration that we would take part in. Uh, between the courts and the county and the department directors and heads as we look at building a new facility and, and traveling down that road.
That's hard to predict.
It is hard to predict, I, I agree with you.
I'm just thinking you could use a much smaller space if it were done electronically.
You could use a much smaller space, uh, if you look at how your offices. I mean, we have inefficiencies in how that facility is set up, having my two staff split. Um, it creates, it creates a dissension in work product. Um, because staff aren't able to work similar case types. So just that alone could potentially reduce space and overhead. Um, you know, courtroom one in that courthouse is, is wonderful. It's, it's probably the, the biggest, most spacious feeling courthouse that we have between Coos and Curry Counties. But does it need necessarily to be that big? Um, could it be set up differently? So those are all, I think, valuable and, and reasonable conversations to have and to really analyze what's, what's necessary. Um, especially when we're talking about taxpayer dollars. Cause that's what ultimately we're talking about is, is taxpayer dollars, um, which is, you know, the most valuable asset that we have.
All right, uh, Sheriff, if you would, please come back up. I'd, I'd like to ask you if you would look into, um, what it would take and cost to have a fully manned front door there? We, we already have the machine you said. Um, to have, have a deputy at that door during court hour, you know, eight to five or whatever it is, five days a week. And could we use a reserve deputy as, you know, to, at part-time in there also to give your deputy a break for, you know, during off times or lunch or whatever? I mean, working all that in, could you get us a number on what it would cost?
Well, what I would imagine, you'd have to pay a 40-hour week, uh, with benefits and everything. And you're looking probably about 80 grand. And I'm just, mm, top of my head. Um, and if you use a, uh, like a volunteer reserve in the meantime, when these, that person's off or even to help, sit there and help with that. But you're still going to need somebody that paid position and you're looking about 80 grand, I would think.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But I can verify that with Julie, uh, as far as entry level things. And I don't think you need to have a fully certified corrections officer or deputy to do that. I think you can hire and train somebody with, with security clearance.
Okay.
To do that, because all they're going to need is, um, backup when something happens. And we're always going to be available for backup, so that may reduce the cost quite a bit.
Okay. So what I would like to propose, uh, from the workshop is that we, um, that we give Mr. Langford some direction. And that would be that we look into, um, you know, what, what exactly the cost would be to have a fully manned. Um, metal detector at the front door and a single access point entry. And then I think to have the egress from those doors, because I think under fire codes, we're going to have to leave those doors open for emergency exit anyway. Um, that, you know, employees could leave through those doors. Um, I don't know where Mr. Langford would be on that, um, because I think I would rely more on your experience, sir. Um, do you think we should leave those doors open for, for, for employees to leave through or they leave, come and go through the same door? Sorry. I know you don't want to, you don't want to have a lot of input in this, I'm just asking what in your experience?
My recommendation would be a single point of entry that in Curry County would be the front and rear entry. And that we only allow egress out.
Okay.
Um. There's some creative solutions I think that we can look at in terms of victims, in terms of juvenile defendants that are in custody coming into the facility. I think we can creatively work through each of those situations. Um, there could be some situations during elections that we want to maybe do something different with a side door for, for entry points during an election, uh, cycle. But I think creatively, I, I think the department heads could work with maintenance facilities and we could all be on the same page with that. But I would say front and rear only with the understanding that we'll explore options through the rear entrance. Of having a more secure entry at the rear through either a, a button or something like that, but to start front and rear entry only.
Okay, so that's what I would like to propose is that we look at, uh, letting Mr. Langford leave here. With looking at fully, full-time staffing, we'll have the sheriff look into exactly what it would cost that we can examine. Uh, maybe at the next board meeting, so we don't kick this can too far down the road. Or, because I'm sure Sheriff, you could probably have something for us in a few days on, on exactly what it would cost. Um, exactly what it would cost to have it fully staffed with metal detector in the front. We would lock the side doors once that happens for employee, uh, exit only. No public exit unless under emergency. And then I would still like to look at, at getting a bid on what it would cost to fence the back parking lot. And have, um, the gates there so that we can protect. Uh, the judges, district attorney and the youth that go in and out of that gate, um, that leave, that enter and leave that building unprotected currently.
You have my, if I may?
Sure.
You have my agreement. I just need a little more clarification, we're talking about this small parking lot right here?
Yes.
Fencing that in?
Yes.
Um. If we had a real good, I'm, I'm just a little bit unclear of the plan. If we had a real good plan, I, you'd probably get my support on that too, but I'm not exactly sure where we are. So how could we proceed so that we can maybe do the first step before we, or maybe you could include that in the, in the cost estimate, I presume?
Well, the, the cost estimate, I think for the back parking lot is going to take some time. It's not something that we're going to have ready for the next meeting. That would be another stage that we go through. Like Mr. Langford said, this isn't all going to get done in one stage. But we can do the doors now if we can find the funding for the deputy in the front. And then find a button for the back that we can control that door, uh, and entry. Excuse me.
I think we're on the same page though, Mr. Chair.
We can do that part of it now, we can set that for our next meeting. And then I will also look, uh, to work with Mr. Hanson to get some people here. Um, that will give us some pricing on doing that back parking lot. And providing a, a proper sidewalk entry to that back door and then securing the parking lot.
Um, I, I'm looking at the full-time person. And if we had a fully trained deputy, we're talking, going down to, to training and so forth. Could we use a security person that was bonded rather than that so that we could save a considerable amount of money?
Well, that's what I was just saying, yeah.
Yeah.
If you wanted a trained certified deputy, that's going to cost you.
Big time.
Big time. But if you hired a security person who worked for us, non-certified, you could pay them a less amount. And just to be, uh, custodian at the door, basically.
I'd feel a lot better about that.
Yeah, I don't know what that's going to take. Uh, we'd have to figure out what the hourly rate's going to be and just, and, but if you pay 40 hours a week, you're going to have to pay benefits of that as well. Um, unless you do two part-time people or three part-time people to, under security, but.
How about a couple of part-time?
I'll leave that up to Julie in HR. You first?
Cause the benefits add up.
I was just gonna add that, um.
We're gonna tag team.
I was just gonna add that our meeting next week, uh, for the November.
I was just gonna add that our meeting next week, for the November sixth meeting, the board is going to discuss the idea of possibly applying for CDBG funds to begin the process of rebuilding the courthouse and jail. There's three, I sent an email out to all departments to ask for projects that they wanted to see proceed with CDBG dollars, and we had three responses. So, we have three projects that the board is gonna discuss and hopefully send one of them through, one of those three, through for an application.
Commissioner Gold?
Mm-hmm.
I will reach out to Jackson County, because their court security are not certified officers, deputies, so I'll reach out and I'll get that information, and I can share that with the sheriff.
Yeah, I just think we need to be real careful with the dollars spent.
Mr. Boyce?
Would that, did I hear you say the CDBG grant would include cost of security personnel?
So, the CDBG grant that I was looking at applying for would be to begin the planning phase of a new courthouse and jail. So, you know, we have to plan it, we have to see what the needs are, do those, that type of study work, and then after we have that in place, then we would be able to apply for the funding to actually do the construction on it.
Okay. I have one more.
Yes, sir.
I don't wanna cut costs, you know, I want the public to know, that's the one area of law enforcement, when we are trying to protect the people in that building, it needs to be somebody very well-trained. Jackson County, I would assume, has three or four at the same time, or at least the potential with the sheriffs, similar to our courthouse, the sheriff's department, or at least the jail, excuse me, is right directly underneath the courthouse. So, I don't wanna cut costs there, I want somebody that, I want the public to know that, you know, our people are well-guarded.
Well, that's what I think everyone here does know, is that our sheriff, you don't need to get in your car to get to the courthouse, he's right there, so...
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
May I?
Yes.
Eric Hanson, Facilities Director. Regarding the securing the parking lot, I would like to recommend, if you are going into bids, that you look into the cost of a CMU mortar-filled, that'd be a cinder block wall in lieu of a chain link with two swing-arm gates. That would provide the security requested, and it would be a failsafe system.
Okay. I think for cost, though, mortar versus a chain-link fence is going to be expeditiously cheaper for the chain-link, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
We had a good turnout today.
Yes, we did.
I wanna give gratitude to Facilities Maintenance Director Hanson. The upkeep, as Mr. Langford said, quite good on a very old building, and I also wanna thank you for taking some serious commitment to solving these issues. That's all I have.
Does anyone have anything further?
Nope.
This meeting's adjourned.